Good evening. Welcome to the December 17, 2013 Selectmen's Workshop. This is a workshop and at the moment, we don't have anybody in the audience here. But to anybody who cares to walk in, there will be no public comment this evening. This is a workshop. So we'll move right along. Workshop business. First issue is the review of draft budget development schedule. And everyone has a copy of that. Are there any comments on that, folks?
Yeah, I sent an email that February 25 doesn't work for me. I'll be out of town. I talked about maybe closing the gap from the 24th to the 14th somehow, maybe moving the 25th to the previous week. I don't know if that works for people.
I'm flexible on that. Anybody else? So you move it to the previous week, that would be February...
7.
7?
Well, yeah, have Don submit his budget. Well, I mean, that's not the one that is actually the problem. It's the February 25 meeting. So if we can move that to like the 18th.
18th is vacation week, in case that matters to anyone. Doesn't matter to me anymore. It used to.
Doesn't matter to me either. Anybody else have a problem with the 18th of February?
So change Tuesday the 25th or Tuesday the 18th?
Did you want to still move the February 14th one up closer to January?
I mean...
Well, the problem with that is, you know, the further back you push it, the less time there is. And that begins to be a problem. What you're doing right now is you're shortening your review time. But if you go the other way, you're shortening the time on the staff and me.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying... I would defer to Nancy. What do you think, Nancy?
I will say that we didn't get the LD1 numbers from Curt until February 14 last year. So you're cutting it tight there.
But if that's the only thing we miss, or even if we could get a preliminary with an update, if we got something out, I don't know how hard that is, so.
Well, wouldn't February 18 be easier?
Well, we'd need to review it before that, though.
Yeah. When you have four days to review it over the weekend.
Because we could leave it at the 14th. If we get it sooner, we could send it sooner.
Hold on. Back up. What'd you say, Lonny? Say it louder.
February 18th is not good for me. That is the only day that week.
That is not good?
That is not good.
So, I mean, can we do it a different day, like the 20th?
I was gonna say, why are we...
Danielle?
So that sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Thursday, the 20th, and that would give us almost a week to review it.
So the 25th goes to the 20th?
Yeah.
No, the 25th doesn't go to the 20th.
It does.
25th goes to the 20th. Well, then, what is the date of taking place of the 14th?
It's not. You can leave that the same.
Okay, 14th. Okay. Okay. Any other comments on the schedule? If not, then we'll go ahead. Preliminary report of mid-year budget figures. Nancy?
Hello?
There are two main areas of concern for the current fiscal year. On the appropriations side, it's the audit legal account line. A total of $30,000 has been budgeted for this account. $8,000 was budgeted for the audit, and the audit came in under that at 6875. But $22,000 was budgeted for legal, and it's currently at 25, over $25,000. So legal is a concern.
And what were some of those legal expenses that drove it up so much?
Well, there's the Friends of Raymond Cape litigation.
Oh, that lawsuit, yeah.
Right. The Vision contract, back and forth is running up some money. And the Fry Island parking ride expenses that aren't covered by their escrow.
The Vision contract?
I'm sorry.
Assessing software?
Right. Danielle, is that just assessing or code enforcement as well?
That was supposed to be assessing code software that...
Oh, so that's not under legal? I'm sorry.
Then why...
Well, you go into contract, you do a contract.
We run every contract we have now through the legal filter. And unfortunately, in the case of this one, there was some back and forth trying to come to an acceptable resolution, and it does not appear. We are not going to come to a resolution with Vision. We did not reach a contract that was satisfying to our attorneys and to theirs, and a product that would meet our needs. So we're looking at other alternatives now. So that one did cause some back and forth. But we have found from past experience that it's much more prudent to have the contract as close to what we would like at the outset than to try to back into corrections and changes with a poor contract, which is almost impossible to do.
Thank you.
And plus, we're trying to get some money back from them that we've already paid them for a product we're not getting.
We are gonna get that.
From Vision.
Yes.
What about the Fry Island escrow? Where are we on that?
Well, there's legal for the Fry Island parking ride that's not covered by their escrow.
For instance, when we have the town planner sit at our town planning board meetings, that's not covered by the escrow account. She's representing the town.
You mean the attorney, yes.
The attorney.
That's because she's representing the town, not the application. When she reviews the application, it goes to escrow. But we've now rewritten over the ordinance so that if that passes through, all legal expenses would go through escrow for any sort of defenses in application, not just review of the application. Our ordinance is what comes up on that one.
So is there a projection of how much more legal expenses we're gonna have?
Hopefully only one or two more meetings. So it depends on what they submit.
Okay. And that's it for legal expenses?
Yes.
The board should be aware, though, that if the planning board does reach a decision on the Fry Island application, there could be an appeal. So there could be added expense. I don't know how you're gonna project that, but it seems to be quite a movement.
There are other appropriation lines that look like they're going to exceed the budgeted figures, but they're really not. For instance, in the case of bond payments, the principal and interest are paid in November, and only an interest payment is paid in May. So they're on track. And many of the other contracts that we have, the payments for those contracts are made early in the year, and so they won't have further costs associated with them. Concern on the revenue side, of course, is revenue sharing. We budgeted $195,000 for this account. That was a reduction from the previous year, but the final state estimate that we got in June was only $117,000. So for the first five months of the fiscal year, the towns received $53,107 in revenue sharing, which is 45% of the state's estimate, but it's only 27% of what we have budgeted. So we are going to come up short there.
There's a good chance we're not gonna get any.
At zero. That's good.
At zero.
Not gonna get any going forward or any more this year?
Well, you'll get this year, more than likely. But there's, well, the supplemental budget that the Democrats are proposing is $40 million in tax increases, which is gonna get vetoed. They have no alternative. The governor's proposal in the last budget was to eliminate revenue share.
Totally.
Totally. Zero it out. So I don't think we're gonna get tax increases. So the only solution may be to cut more of the revenue sharing.
So do you have a suggestion for budget prep for that line? I mean, just, I mean, as a prudent, I know it's early right now, but to help give them direction as they develop their budget. You have a gut, Joe? Isn't zero your gut?
I think zero's my gut.
Really? I was gonna say 125, and I guess I was being too optimistic.
Because they have no solutions. You know, to just fill more revenue with tax increases isn't gonna pass. And, you know, so they have no other options at that point, other than to go into revenue sharing.
So, good things on the appropriation side. There was $40,000 budgeted for insurance deductible reimbursement, and so far, we've only used a quarter of that. So keep our fingers crossed for the remainder of the fiscal year, because we don't know what's gonna happen. Excise tax, it's so unpredictable. You don't know from month to month what you're gonna get. So what I did was average each month for the past two years, plug those figures in, and it looks like we could come out to exceed the current budget by $30,000. So there's a plus there.
Possibly.
Possibly. Depends on how things go. Buy a new car.
Before when? Before June 30?
June 30.
Okay.
There are other revenues that are in the budget that aren't recorded until later in the year. So even though it may say zero right now received, it's nothing to worry about. For instance, cable franchise fees, we show that we've received nothing right now, but the July through December payment won't come in until January, and the January through June payment won't come in until July. But even though it comes in in July, it will still be attributable to this fiscal year.
What do we have in the undesignated fund balance right now?
Was it 2.5 million?
2.3 million? It's up to 2.5?
It's about that.
Nancy, on, if, you know, if our employees stay healthy and tax reimbursements, I mean, insurance reimbursements come in at half, that would be 20,000, correct? And if excise tax meets your, which I'm gonna assume is a conservative estimate of 30,000, that's 50,000. What would that leave us short on revenue sharing if those two things happen just by themselves?
30, 35,000.
We'd need 30, 35 more.
But it's still possible that we could achieve that through careful stewardship of appropriated funds. You know, if department heads only bought what they absolutely had to, we could still make that. They might have to give up something.
Because our hope going into the year was that excise tax would increase, which it might...
Remember, we raised it, I think, 20,000 from the original estimate.
Yes.
But it still may not be enough to make up the shortfall in state revenue sharing.
It's too unpredictable.
Right. I was just trying to get a ballpark.
Are there any other expenses besides legal that you see going out of control?
No.
So if we don't have a balanced budget, Don, do you know what our procedure is at this, towards the end of the year?
I have contingency fund.
That's one solution. You know, you always have the solution of the special account meeting to appropriate monies from undesignated fund balance. And I suppose you have, I mean, I would defer on this one, but I suppose you have the option, if you're very close, to run it to the end. And, you know, you may end up with a slight overdraft, which also is the same resolution to fund balance. But I don't know legislatively. I've never been in that position ever in my career, what the process, if any, is with that.
Because technically, Nancy, would not be able to pay bills, right?
Would we have to go to a special town meeting?
That's probably the most correct solution, I think. But, I mean...
I mean, you can do what the legislature does, and state government, and push everything into the new year. I mean, and then you're into the new budget year while you still are technically in balance.
I think the one I would take would be, assuming we still have capacity and, you know, capacity in the contingency fund, you know, you don't spend it on something else, obligate it to something else, and if we're short, I would balance it that way.
Where are we in, have we spent anything yet?
Oh, yes. We have. And you have anticipated, I think you're anticipating spending some more with the citizen survey. We actually have spent, and I don't have the number, but...
I don't have it either, but we spent some...
36,000 of 75,000.
Spent some to buy the valley property, the Valley Road property.
So that may really help us decide on our survey. I mean, if we need to hold that money back, that might make the survey question further down the road.
Where would contingency fall?
It's not on there.
Okay. It's an appropriation of annual town meeting that enables you to utilize fund balance without some meeting authorization.
Well, we already have town meeting authorization.
Without an additional town meeting authorization.
So you think we have somewhere around 36,000 left in that account?
I think so.
Next review of summary of needs from department heads. What do you want to start with?
Well, Nathan probably needs to go out and plow.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he can go first.
We got a truck we probably ought to replace coming up, the F-550, in this coming budget. It's a, right now, it's 98,000 for that truck. I would assume by spring, it's gonna be a clip over 100,000. I've got 65-ish, give or take, in my equipment reserve, and if we continue forward to 35,000 here that we put away, and that we should have enough money to possibly finance half of it, or there's options that we haven't really explored yet.
How much are you thinking it'll cost?
Today's price on the truck is 98,000. That's up. Last year, when we looked at it, I think it was around 96 or 97. It gone up that much, and I would expect them to go up come spring. That's a 13. We're looking at, or exploring possibly adding some part-time staff to the Public Works Department or full-time. We haven't dove into it too deep yet. Our volunteer staff, the 302 cleanup and facilities cleanup stuff is, they're getting to a point where it's getting overwhelming for them. They approached me a couple months ago, and it's something we're gonna look at. Outside of that, I don't have too many other expenses I think that are gonna go up. I had thought of a full-time mechanic, but I don't know so we can do that yet, or have the need completely yet for it. We looked at it last year, and we involved the fire department in it, and we could probably justify it without too much trouble and save some money.
Have you talked to the fire department about it?
Briefly. I haven't actually sat down with Bruce and gone over the numbers. We looked at, when we looked at it last year, we'd already got, it was just before we got our orders from you guys on where we were gonna be with the budget, and that was one of the things that we voluntarily just dropped and pushed out for another year.
I guess one of the questions I have, not just to you, Nate, but to Don, you know, our policy that we agreed to as selectmen was to maintain a healthy fund balance, which is around $2 million with our budget that we have. And we just have, we have 2.5 million in fund balance. How are we gonna use that? I mean, there's a couple ways you can use that half million. You could apply it to things to increase some expenditures, or you can reduce taxes with it.
What I've always recommended, when you get to a point above and beyond what your stated goals are, is use it as money for major non-recurring capital expenditures as opposed to instant tax relief on a year-to-year basis. So I would use it for bricks-and-mortar type projects, major non-recurring projects, and or acquisitions, you know, if you wanted to acquire a piece of equipment. But that's less desirable than, say, acquiring, you know, some sort of facility or something that is more permanent. That's the way I look at it. But some towns, and there's nothing wrong with this, we've had a lot of debate about this, because maybe I'm on the minority side of this, but there's nothing wrong in towns routinely use fund balance to lower the tax rate. But, of course, it's one of those things where, you know, if you're not continually putting money back in, then, you know, you don't have the money available to use it to, as a mechanism to reduce the year-to-year tax rate. So what you've tried to do is to fine-tune the numbers as much as possible, and we've done that. So that results in less money to fund balance, although we have succeeded in increasing its sum. My worry would be if you started using it now under the very tightened sort of budgetary strictures we have, you would very shortly get in a situation where you'd have the more money out than in, and it'd be a problem. So my best recommendation would be use money, major non-recurring capital expenditures only, and very carefully at that.
Yeah. I mean, until we know where this revenue sharing thing is going, I mean, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't spend half a million dollars and just go, here it is.
Right.
Because I think you may be using it to shore up the revenue sharing account.
Is that 195? Is that the amount that we were expecting?
That's what we're expecting. We received 53.
Right. Their estimate's 117.
117 is what they said, so. I mean, it's, you know, a piece of equipment, might make some sense to...
The state never pays, ever. They say they do, and they never pay the cost.
I wouldn't buy something, you know, a pickup truck, but I might consider buying a heavy truck or a ton truck. Those are now getting so expensive.
That 550's got a service life of 12, that one's an old three. And I would expect to see another 12 to 13 years out of the next one.
But, of course, the reality of that truck is, in most communities, they don't run them 10 years. I mean, that truck's still, I mean, to outward appearances, still looks okay, but the frame's weak. A number of the major components are tired. It's a worn-out truck. I mean, 10 years is too long to keep a truck of that type.
Now, would we trade that truck in?
Yes.
So, is that 98 with the trade-in?
No. No, that's the actual, there's room to move on that. I would, Wyndham had one, had the same year truck, a little less mileage, a little bit more rusty. They saw 20,000 out of it, and they kept half the plow.
Wasn't the 98, after you cut a few of the attachments or whatnot?
No, that's a complete truck, just the way we got it. Most of the stuff on this truck won't fit on the new truck. The body styles have changed, the motors have changed. You could keep the blades, would fit, but then you're reducing the value of the trade-in. So it's kind of a balancing act, what do you do with it? Some towns do save what they can off of them and sell the truck, but they see a lot less residual value out of the used vehicle.
Last truck we traded a similar age, I want to say we got around $10,000. Maybe this is that much more truck, but with the problems it's had, the service history it's had, I'd be shocked if we saw 20,000 on it.
This one's in a little worse shape than that GMC when we got rid of it. It's got less mileage on it, but it's a lot rustier. We had to have frame welded this fall to get a sticker on it. It's got some underlying issues, the engine block's getting really rusty, to a point that we've got a little antifreeze leaking where we shouldn't have it.
I guess one of my things is that we want to continue with the road maintenance plan that we had started last year. So we need to make sure we have enough money in that account. I guess I'm to the point where, at 1125, which is our mill rate, if we could keep it stable by using some of the undesignated fund balance, continuing buying equipment, by using some of that money, but making sure we still have a healthy fund balance because of all the issues that we're having as far as, you know, we don't know what kind of revenues come in from the state. If we could keep the tax rate stable, I think that goes a long way. But we do have the cash to do a lot of this stuff, but that's just what I'm thinking.
One of the things we also saved, possibly for the revenue sharing question last year, was we didn't spend all the money from the sale of the tower land. I believe there was a couple hundred thousand.
We are applying 705,000 this year.
Right, this year.
So there won't be anything left. We, when it, the remainder went into undesignated fund balance.
I know, but as a theory...
Oh, as a theory.
Right? We sold the property for about 900,000. We immediately used 705.
It's applied to this year as a...
Right, this year, there's 705, so...
That we spent.
That we spent.
And so there was 195,000 left over.
Which went into undesignated.
Which is part of that 2.5.
That's correct.
2.5.
But we did, we didn't spend that entire 900 because we were uncertain about the state.
Correct.
So that's a one-time 190 that we don't normally have. And that's one of the reasons it's up where it is.
Right. But the fund balance has grown, because, you know, we were at 1.8 million two years ago. Now we're at 2.5. So, you know, somehow, revenue's coming in, or people aren't spending as much, and we're saving some money.
It's a combination of both, but I'm telling you that the sort of dramatic swings either way are something you won't see. You may have seen that years passed, now several years passed, but I don't think we're gonna see extraordinary large over collections of revenues, and you won't see, for the most part, because of the way the budgets are so tightened now and so precise, you're not gonna see a significant under expenditures, I don't think. Some under expenditures, what you aim for, so that you, you know, can come out and, you know, positive there, and then you hope that your collections come in better than expectations.
Nate, on the mechanic issue, any certification needs because of public safety equipment being worked on by a mechanic?
Yes, if we went with the fire department, he's got some guidelines that he has to meet. For our stuff, it's just a main state inspection license for commercial vehicles. And I think if you, if we joined in and shared that position, his needs to hire the certification that he needs will get us a better person. So my stuff will be well taken care of and well-covered in any specialized area on our equipment.
What are we looking at for our salary range?
When I ran the numbers, I was looking at around 40 bucks an hour, and add that to...
That doesn't include benefits, right?
No, that doesn't include benefits.
Okay, so that's 42,000 a year, plus another 40%. You're looking at $60,000.
Correct. The garage cost to operate that garage on a year is around $3 an hour to run that garage. And if you take out what we're paying for subcontracting work out that we don't do in-house, and I'm not sure Bruce's budget, I don't think it would cover the total cost, but it would put a good dent in it, and it would give us a lot better, it would be more of a convenience thing for us.
Yeah. So do you have any idea how much, between Bruce and you, that you spend on repair?
I spend around $30,000 a year, 30, a little over $30,000 a year on vehicle repairs.
Is that, but that doesn't include parts, or is that...
That's everything. That's everything.
Which is still gonna pay the parts, you just wouldn't pay for the labor piece.
Correct. What we're gonna save on parts is that most garages are getting us for around 100% markup on parts. So there'd be some saving on parts. I don't know what Bruce's...
Because your stuff goes up the East Coast of McRae.
Yes. I was just trying to get to McCarren. We're running 65 to 70 dollars an hour on the stuff that we send out. We've tried to eliminate as much as we can and do it all in-house, but it's becoming a challenge. I mean, the trucks are getting older, they're not new, and it was really right up front this spring when we're trying to get stickers done in spring. Stuff's just getting old, and it's getting a lot of work to keep it on the road.
Question, Nathan, how much of that time is your time, that you're spending under a truck?
Oh, quite a bit. Quite a bit.
But if you don't have the work for them, like if he's piled up, so like, can you do something else with it?
We can pull him out on the highway crew. Absolutely.
My concern, frankly, is for Nathan, because, you know, he's public works director, he's managing the crew and the projects. You know, you get some level of support from Danielle, but he doesn't have a dedicated, you know, full-time support person, which many public works agencies... you know, full-time support person, which many public works agencies even our size do. And then he's the mechanic too, so when you look at what Nathan's doing for the town in some total, it's really an amazing thing, and I think it really speaks to the dedication that he has to the town and has had. So, I worry about you, Nate, whether you can sustain this.
It's getting tiring. It's not as much fun as it used to be, being down at 2:00 in the morning trying to get your truck back together.
But I think you guys also have a very limited crew. You guys are out all night long, especially during the winter season, and then you still have to do all the stuff that, besides doing the roads, you still have other work that needs to be done. How do you do that with guys that are very tired, you know, because they've been up all night long? That's a safety issue, it really is.
I try very hard to manage the crew and make sure that we don't overtax them.
And I'm not saying nothing bad about that, I'm just saying.
No, 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 I understand that. There's a lot of times that I'm the first out, I'm always the first one out during the winter storms, and I'm the last one in, and once I call the crew in, I can take a break. And I do that to keep the overtime down and to keep them to a minimum, so they're not wore out. It's worked so far, but the biggest problem we're running into is stuff's breaking, and that's when you don't get to break. You gotta fix it and get it back up on the road. And even in the summertime, we've got a limited amount of equipment, and if something goes down, we're not so bad now with the addition of the dump truck, but it used to be, if you, with the two dump trucks, if you lost a dump truck, you've lost half your equipment. And now you've reduced your efficiency to a point that it's a problem.
So Nate, when you put some numbers together, will you include not only the outnumbers of what you spend out-of-house with an estimate, obviously, you know, with some indication of parts, I think, which we've heard, but also an indication of how much, you know, are you spending 30% of your time? As a, I mean, just include that as part of your thing, so that we have a net at the end. You know, the budget's not gonna go up, you know, the 70,000, the budget's gonna go up, is it 20,000, is it 30,000? If you could give some explanation as to the logic of that.
I think I can. I can definitely show what we've subcontracted out, what we spend for subcontracting, and the pricing on the parts, that's really easy to do. I can pull that up as to what we pay for it, or what we paid to have it done. That's gonna be easy. The harder part's gonna be my time, because I don't track it that well.
But if you said 20%.
Yeah, I think.
Or you said 30%, well, I mean, that's a, that's a number.
Yeah.
It is time you're not out supervising, it's time another job is not getting done because you're not doing it. You know, I was looking for you once this summer, you were on vacation, and you were at the parts store because you had nobody to go to the parts store, so, I mean, all those things add up as to efficiency.
Yes.
Vacation, Nathan, did you vacation?
I mean, one of the issues that you run into is if you're gonna share it between two departments, who gets priority? And that is no question he gets priority.
Well, I think that most of his stuff, I mean, emergency.
It's pretty easy, isn't it? Public safety gets priority over public works, until there's a snowstorm.
What works, little work I've done for Bruce, and I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak out of turn with Bruce, but most of his stuff is scheduled work, and his emergency breakdowns.
More like a PM.
Yes.
Very rarely does it break down because, well.
Because you gotta keep it up and running, is what it is.
Because you're maintaining it up to such a high standard that it doesn't get to fall apart.
Public works is, it breaks, because we've been using it so much, and it's, we've taped it together so many times.
And if you have a breakdown, and he has a breakdown at the same time, we're not gonna stand in the driveway, start arguing about what's gonna get fixed. We'll jump in and fix it. If it's his truck, our truck, I'll help. I mean, that's not gonna happen. And I would think that we can work around that without a problem.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah. I've been to Portland a couple of times at 2:00 in the morning, change a tire on an ambulance.
I know.
But Joe's point to scheduling, or Lonnie's point to scheduling is, you have to schedule your stuff out of service because of coverage.
We do.
So you're gonna know ahead of time when the mechanic's time is scheduled, for the most part.
Yes.
The model that I was thinking about to do this, the mechanic would run the garage, the scheduling would be done with him, I would, he would be an employee under public works, but you'd have to have somebody that was capable and the mindset to do the scheduling, keep the vehicle records, communicate with Bruce, and make sure that his priorities are taken care of.
How easy is to find a capable mechanic?
I don't think it's gonna be that bad. I don't know what his regulations are for his fire trucks, but they're out there, they're out there.
If somebody's willing to get those kind of regulations and have a license, you've gotta have somebody that also drives your truck, so what, a CDL license?
Yeah, you'd want him to have a CDL license.
So you know somebody to keep that, they've gotta be in good standing, so.
When you throw the main state inspection and their license, and the CDL license and his requirements, it's gonna narrow the field down, but I think you're also gonna get a much better quality person.
Gee. I guess, I kinda came in in the middle of it, and I apologize for being late. What was the rough salary?
20 was what I based it on. And even if you add 2 or 3 dollars an hour to the other end of that, I think you can still pull it off of that, I hope.
And I think that's, that would be my only concern, is that enough because of the other shirts on the emergency side of things with the EVT certifications that they have to, there's like 19 of them to maintain every two years, and they have to do those in Springfield, Massachusetts right now. They wouldn't need all 19 of them, because we don't have articulating bucket trucks and things such as that, so we'd have to put that together, but I kinda question, I think, is that enough? And I don't know.
Would it be more feasible for the bigger inspections to sub that out?
And that may be the way we're looking at it, is try to schedule some of the more minor things in, and maybe the person has some general certifications where they can work on wiring issues and stuff like that, but the larger hydraulic.
Like the aerial certification for your ladder trucks.
Correct. And I already subbed the UL testing out on that already.
So that's all stuff that you guys can figure out, come back with some options for us to look at?
I mean, it may not work. The numbers may not work, and we'll have to go somewhere, do something different. I think it's time to look at it.
Right, and I think that we can look at that other piece, and that may be that we could put a great plan together with subbing out those bigger pieces of itself.
And you have a plan in place, Nathan, for the road?
Yeah. The bond money, we've already spent some of it on, we were allowed to expenditure the Plains Road project into that bond. I'm working on getting the bids out for this first year, first cycle coming up, and we should have something in plan by January, I would hope. We've already got the plan as far as what roads are gonna be paved and how they're gonna be done. We've got Sobago Tech already starting to do the engineer work on Main Street. We're gonna, one of next year's projects is Main Street from, where the 121 intersection to downpass the fire station. And with the catch basin system that's there right now, it's deteriorated and, or non-working, we opted to have Sobago Tech come in and do the design work. It gives us a much better plan.
So that's a flooding area there on Main Street?
Yes, yeah. It's been a problem for three years.
Chris? Hey, I guess I'm on. Requesting an extra $1,000 for software. Danielle's been working on a new software program that would be utilized by not only my department, but somewhat for public works and also. But that would help cover that increase and.
Is it a scheduling software? What kind of software is it?
There's licensing each year with the software, plus the initial cost of it.
But what does the software do? Is it?
It keeps track of all my scheduling, for all my permitting, all the records of each file, property files. And part of that request is for keeping up with code software that I can put on my computer. I'd like to be able to, at some point in time, be able to take a tablet out in the field, do my inspections from the field, be able to answer questions right on the fly with the technology in my hand. Smartphones are good, but having a tablet, laptop doesn't really work, we tried that. Problem with that is if you don't have good reception, you're not, you're not gonna get it. It didn't work that well. And my request, I wanted to open the discussion for some part-time help in the summertimes. What happens is, during the summer months, when we have the population triple, I'm out in the field sometimes from 8:30 to 4:00, doesn't leave anybody in the office, we have no office presence, which they rely on Danielle. I had talked to the board last year about the possibility of doing electrical inspections, and I'm gonna be bringing that up again shortly. I've been training with a state plumbing inspector on some of our commercial projects and single families, and I think that in the next month or two, I'll be qualified to do electrical inspections, so I'd be coming to the board looking to do electrical permits, and that would require more administrative work and also more field work. What I found since Jack left, the MUBEC codes are requiring more inspections. Our permit numbers are up, I'm in the field a lot, so I just wanted to open it up to the board that, at some point, whether it's this summer or next, I'm gonna need some help during the summer.
What are current, sorry, where are current permits now? Are they up or down?
They're up in numbers. The revenues are down a little bit, and I think the reason for that this last year was, we had seen for a period of three or four years, really big projects on the lakes, those have kinda stopped, and they brought in a lot of revenue. Big renovations, for instance, it's not a, our fee schedule is based on square foot, not estimated cost of construction, but with rehab projects, it's based on the amount of construction. So you could do a $3 million project, and we're getting a lot more money for that permit than if it was a brand-new square foot price. So I think that's why our revenue went down. I don't see that trend happening for too much longer. I do see, talking to other code officials around us, we're about the only town that is not really rebounding. The southern communities, York, Gorham, Wyndham, Gray, and Poland, they're all booming. Their numbers are way up on permits.
New housing permits?
New housing, yes.
Don't we have a limit, though?
We did. We're looking at repealing that. Because we get down, our growth management ordinance was structured so that it took a 10-year average, then it went from 70% all the way down to 30%. Well, in the last three years, we've only done six or eight homes in the growth management areas. Most of our stuff was around the lakes, so that number went down to, this year I'd only be able to issue eight permits out in the rural areas. So the board, planning board has discussed that and decided to repeal it. It did, it was structured to try to drive development towards the village residential area.
Some of us never agree with that, just so you know.
Well, I'm not, I wasn't here when they adopted it. I just know that it's not working, and.
It was part of the comprehensive plan, wasn't it?
Yeah. And the economy took care of that, and I don't know if that'll continue. It's, in my 50 years of being involved with construction, I've always seen, not that many years, probably 40, it's cyclical. You know, you said 10 years are good, and then you have a couple of years of bad, and it goes back up again.
Well, you're saying that, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking to add possibly a part-time code officer, but you just got done saying that we're not rebounding, so.
I'm anticipating that we are going to rebound. We are rebounding slowly.
Okay. So could this be something that we wait until, like, next year to see how things look?
Well, the problem is, this is for this next year's budget, and, you know, I'll be into the next summer before you know it.
Chris, do you have an estimated cost of?
I just did some quick numbers, and, you know, the three days, maybe two days, I don't really know. I'd like to do a little more research as how much I can get a part-time code officer for. I'm thinking in the 18 to 20 dollar range, and it may mean I only need half a day for a Tuesday and a Friday. I'd really like to just open the discussion and look into it a little bit more.
Somebody you might be able to share with another town, or find one.
Exactly. Yeah, because I think the other towns are feeling the pinch. You know, we went from one code book, the Voca code book, to stack this high, and to enforce that, and to do proper plan review, and do the proper inspections, it takes a lot of time. And I, you know, I think we're giving the public good service, but I want to continue to be able to do that and do it in a manner that's in keeping with the code requirements that I have.
When do you think the planning board is gonna try and repeat? And we have to kind of town meeting, right?
It's already gone through the planning board, it'll be a warrant article coming up to you guys at public hearing. The reason, you know, if we didn't do something, I mean, this year I issued seven out of the eight, next year I anticipate that I'd have to say no to somebody. And if you're a landowner out there and you've put in all the infrastructure in a subdivision, you got 15, 20, or some of these, kind of leaving more lots than that vacant, and they can't get a building permit, it's not gonna fly.
Do you have turnaround times now for certain permits?
My average turnaround time for a single-family house is less than a week if everything is in my office. Sometimes in, if somebody came to me today with a single family, they could get it in two or three days. Now, a commercial permit, it might be a couple weeks, depending on how thorough it is. Usually there's some back and forth, I request information, it takes a while to get back, but we're, we're pretty good at turnaround.
Chris, I'm sure this will come up during the public hearing, but you talked about the repealing of the permits. When we passed that, do you know what the average number was then?
70. 70 to 60, 65 and 70 for 2005 and 2006.
That's how many permits you could have issued?
Were issued.
Were issued.
Then they, they took a 10-year average from 2006 back, and then they took 70% of that for the next year, 2007. And then they kept decreasing it each year to the point where it got to 30% of a 10-year average, which the 10-year average right now is 24. 30% of that is eight.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chris? The shredder, I'm assuming that's some kind of commercial shredder here?
It's not me.
That's Kirk's office, administration.
Oh, sorry. All right, you don't know anything about the shredder, then, of course?
No, I know we need one.
I'll make you a deal. I'll do it for 700. I'll come and sit up there and rip paper with the paint.
It's gonna be in little tiny pieces.
I could do that. I could talk to you guys and shred all day long.
You just agree with that.
Please?
Yes? Yep, the shredder is becoming a necessity. We have a small, it's almost like a home size that we're using now, and I expect it's gonna die at some point.
I'm surprised it hasn't burned out already.
It sounds like it's half-dead now. Do you need, need the necessity of doing it, you know, at a certain time, or have you looked into contracting that out?
Commercial shredders.
I've done, or even contracted it out, and having them come, and they throw the whole boxes and everything, and it's.
Well, our problem comes with the fact that, yes, we could do that, but we're gonna have to hold some things. Let's say, wrote a registration card, it's had gone beyond, you know, the people that died, and we keep them for three years, and this sort of thing. And we pick them out of the drawers constantly, as the state tells us we're supposed to pull them. And I feel very uncomfortable with things like that sitting around.
Well, you get a locked metal container with a slot about that big, and you just throw things in there, and then the service, well, you can, we contract every week they show up. They come in, take it, shred it.
I do it once a year, and they miss 30, 40 boxes, and they charge by the box.
Yep, we don't, that's the problem, we don't have a great deal.
Right.
What we've been doing is stacking in the basement, let's say old ballots from previous elections. After two years, they can be destroyed, and Nathan has sent somebody up to have them burned. We have to watch them be burned, but, you know, that's a possibility, we could have them shredded or whatever. Nancy has things in her office that need to be destroyed.
Absolutely.
And they have to be kept confidential.
I would recommend you check with Records Management, I think is one of them, or
Nancy has things in her office that need to be destroyed.
Absolutely.
And they have to be kept confidential.
I would recommend you check with Records Management, I think is one of them, or Iam Mountain. You know, they all provide these services. If you have very little to shred, you could go months without them having to come by. And I can't remember if they charge by the pound or, I think it's by the pound.
When we did it, it was, it was by the box, and the box was a certain size. So it all equivalates to, you know, by the pound.
They'll give you a container that you can't get into unless someone has the key to it.
You definitely need to shred, but just different avenues to say, okay, well, if we bought a new shredder, it'd be $1,500. And it's probably $1,500 to shred it, or, you know, to shred that amount in a year's time, or something to that effect. So, you know...
Yeah, I would definitely look into it.
It's an option.
Because I think it could be a lot cheaper for you.
Well, I can certainly look into it.
But a new shredder potentially would last years versus a yearly contract, so...
Yep, very true as well.
Yeah, but I mean, you, you may not spend $150 a whole year.
Well, I see what you're saying.
What they're saying is they don't have a lot.
But it's constant, so.
Well, but you throw it into this container.
Yeah, I have a concern, a concern about it in any case. But there is one other thing that I don't know if you have on your sheets there. Kind of doesn't really come under the clerk's office, but then again in Raymond it does, the cemeteries. And I'm presently trying, getting a price on clearing the lot next to the Raymond Hill Church. We're running out of space.
Oh, I thought I was supposed to do that.
You've got a lot to do. I want to get a price and see what it's going to cost to...
We want the trees for the rose control mulch for next year's project.
In any case.
Hold off on that.
Now, the first expense I'm talking about is I've talked to Owens McCullough at Cibago Techniques to get the plot line, to find out exactly what we own up there. And I won't take a survey, all the pins are there and everything, but I'll have more for you later when I have more time to talk to him and he can give me some numbers. But we're almost out of space at Raymond Hill Cemetery.
Goodbye.
Is that the most popular cemetery? Does it have plots down on North Raymond?
Yeah, people like to be buried where they want to be buried, not where it's available, I guess is the, but it's, it's, yeah, no, it's not absolutely. We have space. Raymond Village is the only one that, once they're gone, they're gone, because there's no place to go to there. But I did want to expand the possibilities at Raymond.
Is there a lot left for plots at Mill Street, on Mill Street?
A few, a few. But here again, because it's such an old cemetery, we don't know what's under the grass. We know what's on a piece of paper, but we don't know what's under the grass, so.
That'd be awkward.
Yeah.
So Nate, you'll have to give Louise a price for that land. If you want that mulch, you better, you better give her a good price, because otherwise she'll give it to somebody else.
Sticking out his territory.
But also, as far as cemeteries go, we spend the money upfront, we get most of it back over time.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they pay for them. They pay for the plots.
Right. But does that pay for the clearing? Right.
Our plots are actually pretty cheap.
Yeah, they are.
Have we looked at raising the price of the plots?
Not recently. It's 300 for a resident per plot.
Right. And that's a one-time fee.
That's a one-time fee.
Then we maintain it until it's used, and then maintain it forever after that.
But that's enough room for one coffin.
Are you serious? That is dead cheap.
Unintended.
No, I mean that.
Dirt cheap.
Yes.
Well, unintended there too, right?
Boy, sorry.
You have to give her a minute, Sam.
There's so much more in Pennsylvania. There are thousands down there. That's crazy. Wow, sorry, I did not say that.
I think you really need to look at raising prices on the plots, especially for non-residents.
Well, we can certainly do that.
Because non-residents are paying over $1,000 a plot at least, anywhere else.
Yep.
It hasn't happened here in Raymond, but in a previous community that I managed, the town was actually discovered in that way, that you could buy a cemetery plot for a couple hundred bucks with an ocean view. And people did, from all over the world. And so we had to put a moratorium on it, actually.
Can somebody explain to me why an ocean view would be important? When you go visit the grave, you get the ocean.
When you go visit the grave, it's a very serene place. People vacation there, they like the idea.
Who knows what happens from down there?
When you get down that dead-end road, you visit it.
I do think that's very inexpensive for what has to go into it, you know, from, from now and then until it's used, once it's used. And of course, that doesn't, that does not count the digging of the hole.
Oh, no, no.
But still, 300 is...
It's not just a hole.
Dirt cheap.
It's perpetual care. But that's, that's the only other thing that I have.
Bruce is already...
Already done. Bruce gets nothing, he's going to be happy with it.
No, 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 go ahead, Bruce. I thought you were, sorry.
Oh, no, 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 sorry. We have, we have a couple of things up, coming up. One of them being obviously is ever-increasing training needs, and we go through that about every year. I come in and I give you that, that story. And again, we expect some more requirements on our folks. So again, that will translate to a little bit more in our training fund. And we're anticipating approximately a $2,000 jump in the training account itself for payroll for that account. We're looking at the need, I think in the summertime, particularly as our busiest season, to try to put on a per diem person during the weekdays. Nights were doing pretty well, but during the days, if the students are not here, and I anticipate we will lose our students this summer, they'll be coming back, but in the fall, but I do anticipate we'll lose them. And Falmouth just went through this in a transition year where they had all three of their students gone, and it really hurt them. So it impacts our ability to handle calls and the multiple calls that come in simultaneously. So that's a big concern to us. So we're looking at that right now, trying to put together some kind of a plan and plan out what part of that season we need. And of course, I can't predict call volume, but I can go by past trends and say, you know, July, August, and early September. Maybe it's the last two weeks of June, too, and figure out how to cover that better than we are right now. So that's one of the things that we're looking at there. We have the tower project, and we just don't know what the materials are going to cost yet, because I haven't gotten the engineering back. So I don't know what we're going to be into for materials as that project materializes. So I can't give you any guestimates even on that at this point. But we're talking about the base for the tower and the building, the infrastructure that goes with it, that we would have to cover the, the material costs for.
You don't have any thing in mind about, about?
I don't as of yet, no. It's one of the things that we're trying to get, we're going to get coal and to do the ground engineering, et cetera, et cetera. So we can plan for that.
When do you anticipate that tower to be erected?
Well, we're looking at spring, summer, and with the guard projects, see if that happens. Like I said, it's just the material, not the labor that will be responsible for. So it's a big benefit, and we'd like to take advantage of that. I can guesstimate the building, the infrastructure as far as getting power, driveway, and Nathan can help us with that. And those, actually, we already have a figure on the driveway. Those things are fairly easy. It's, it's what needs to go in the ground for the base of that tower to make it work that we really need to do.
But those are all one-time causes.
And they're one-time.
Which is a capital improvement.
We talked earlier about major non-recurring capital improvements. And since you've opened that subject, you know, the possibility of some, the innovative readiness, training, IRT training and national event that could happen here, is likely to happen here with the Boy Scouts, could include us, maybe even is looking more likely than not to include us, is going to put in play a array of potential projects that you could, you know, choose from. You could do summer, all of them. And so those are going to fit in that category of major non-recurring capital improvements, and probably will exceed the ability, will exceed, if you did everything, the ability that the town has with that amount of money that you talked about from surplus. But that, that will be one of the big imponderables, you know, what, how much of that do you want to do? And we're working on getting better numbers and refined numbers, and even more importantly, scheduling, because this thing may go on for a couple, three years. And so that's one of our main missions right now, to try to nail, nail down that information for you as soon as possible. Danielle may have some more updated information, but it, it now looks like probably the bulk of what we would be doing would not occur in this coming fiscal year, although there may be some things that could happen. Still correct?
Yeah. Well, 2014 is the summer start, and that'll be from May to September.
Yeah, okay. So, so that's a, that's something we'll be planning for and bringing to you. And then I guess you, Budget Committee, town meeting, should it get that far, decide what you want to do.
I guess the other, the other issue in the normal budget that would, would be an impact, and this may be cured somewhat as Nathan's project comes to fruition, is the maintenance. And we're at about 60% currently on our maintenance line item. And I've got a couple of fairly large bills outstanding right now. I just haven't received the paperwork on them yet. So I'm looking at another 2,000 or 3,000 in incoming bills right now, putting us, that will put us up over the 60% mark at half the year. We've got a lot of the bigger stuff due in the spring, like our normal services and pump services and such. So that, that's going to be another impact. We didn't plan on it, but our fleet is aging, and the bigger trucks, and they're starting to cost more and more in repairs. Something that we have to consider there. Depending on how this project works out, that will kind of tell us where we'll be with that. You know, if a lot of our general maintenance, oil changes, and chassis services are going to get done in-house, then that may save us enough money that we can keep our line the same. We figure just in chassis, oil changes, and things like that, the basic of basics, about 1,000 per truck per year. So right off the bat, you're looking at 8,000 out of that budget.
How often do you have to change the oil?
And rescues are about three, sometimes four times a year. The pickups and command vehicle are three, four times, and the engines are usually once a year. Sometimes twice, depending on mileage and use.
It's like every 3,000 or 4,000 miles, or?
And it's based on hours and mileage, actually. We really watch, we really watch both of those figures. For example, a couple of years ago, we pumped all night with one truck, 24 hours straight with, with engine two, and did a complete fluids change, one end to the other on the vehicle after that, because it equated to like 3,000 miles or hours. Hours equated to X amount of miles, which required it to have another one.
When you're pumping, you're running the RPM up really high, so it's equivalent to taking a pretty long trip.
It is, it really is. So engine hours really count against us in what we do, more than, more than the mileage does. Mileage is fairly short, trip, point to, you know, point A to point B, and then the return.
Just straight idling is 33 miles an hour. 33 miles to one hour of idling on a vehicle, basically.
Yep, in that formula, yeah, that, that formula we enter in, but then when you're pumping, et cetera, and it's...
It's a lot more.
It's a lot more. So those are, those are all things that we consider, you know, when we do that. And that's just the straight-up chassis services and basic lubrications, changing pump fluids, hydraulic fluids, things like that. Then we add in, we froze up three pump gauges at a fire on Meadow Road recently, and they're about a buck 20 apiece. It's just something that happens, it really can't be helped, but they have to be replaced. The unforeseeables, if you will. So those are things that we're considering as well.
Do you have any major expenditures coming?
We get the, well, we have the rescue this year. Next year, we planned on trying to replace the engine, and that was engine two, that was in the capital planning. The other thing that we've got to probably talk about is that roof project for District One, or at least some repairs to get us through and maintain a safe and solid building. I don't know if it got forwarded yet. I just got it out real late this afternoon, but a picture of inside our building with snow on it.
I didn't know if that was something you wanted me to send out, but I put, it looks very cold. It was snow or ice around the junction box in the attic?
Yeah, in the attic, there's that much snow on top of a switch box, and then down the inside unshingled roof, where the two roofs come together, there's a swath that wide and probably that deep of snow that's blown up and in, and underneath ridge gaps are vents, and, and these things need to be taken care of, because if the snow's blowing in, the rain's blowing in, et cetera. And, you know, we've got a great building. We should try to keep it that way, obviously, and not have to repeat that expense.
What's good about the heat exchanger, too?
And the heat, yeah. Heat has been fixed and replaced, and I don't know what that one will cost in the end, but the motor and the whole circuitry were worth about. So that's the final answer was.
At least you used your thermal imaging camera to go through the smoke, and there wasn't an active fire, correct?
And, and, yes. I was out shopping, and the crew called me and said, the snow, the smoke's backing down about three feet from the ceiling, but, and the alarms are going off, but we don't find any fire, and we secured the power to about everything we can. We don't see anything bad bad, so we'll let you know.
You didn't have to use a lot of mileage for that one, though.
No, the crew did not, you know, never started a truck out, so.
They just run a hose in from the bay, right?
Yeah. Walked to the bay, grabbed an extinguisher. So they were fortunate, we found it very quickly, and it was minor.
Bruce?
Yes?
Are we going to do your driveway this coming budget?
We had planned for that, too, Nate. We ought to talk about that and kind of iron out a final price. I mean, we went with some real rough figures last year.
Yeah, we got a $14,000 quote on that.
Yeah, okay, so that's right, we did iron that down to that amount eventually, so...
Which driveway? We're talking District One?
District One.
Trucks come in and out all the time?
Yeah.
They got 10 years, 10, 12 years out now. It's starting to get pretty, noticed it when we was plowing last night.
The front, if you look at it and drive by, you know, doesn't look too bad. It's bowed down, and we collect water and ice right there. It's the back of the building that's the biggest worry, and in the spring rains, it actually, because the driveway is now sloping back towards the building, we actually get water inside the building from, from the heavy rains now, comes in underneath our doors. So we'd like to fix that and be able to pitch that away. And then if, while we're at it, we've got gaps that big on the front where it's pulled away, and our worry is the water getting down in between the building and freezing and pushing out. We'll make that worse. So those are things, again, general maintenance, but expensive maintenance that we should be taking into account.
General maintenance, that sounds like...
That's a capital maintenance argument, actually.
Contractors, you mean.
Well...
You'll be more than that, right?
12 years, yeah. 12 years later, I don't know if we'll get far with that one, unfortunately. Those are about biggest things. And again, we, we kind of put them in our list last year, and, and some of them got prioritized, and some of them didn't. You know, there's only so much to go around, and I think we hit our tax tolerance, and we understand. I'd like to see a plan, if we can, to try to correct these things, so we keep our good infrastructure good for the future.
We haven't done our roads.
Right, exactly.
Same, exactly.
Yeah. Don't want to spend twice as much two years from now.
Dan? Well, there's a few other miscellaneous things on the list here, I know. I think it's Danielle who wants to talk a little bit about assessing. What was that? Okay, well, there is a concern in the office. I think the principal issue was the number of days that we have Kurt LeVell. We, we're still not at where we were with O'Donnell. And you can give us the detail on that, Danielle, because I know you looked at it.
Well, right now, he's at about 43 days or 45. And the problem is, is that in the summertime, Kurt uses up a lot of those days, because he, unlike O'Donnell, does not have a full crew to go out and do his inspections in order to get the new assessments put into place, because every building permit generates an inspection for the assessing office. So when Chris does, like right now, I think we're at like 230.
Close, yeah.
Yeah. He does each and every single one of those in like a, like a two-month span, goes out and reassesses every single one of those properties by himself. So the problem that that poses is that then that concentrates all of his hours in the summertime, because right now I won't see Kurt again until, I think, January 15th. And that's a long span to be going through, and then trying to get it up on, get caught up on things like the MVR, the, you know, abatements, things like that. Like, he does an excellent job, and he's extremely professional, and he was actually hesitant about asking for these numbers, like, asking for an increase of ten days. So, I'm asking, because, you know, well, I mean, like, he was a great...
Because you're not afraid to.
No. I think he does an excellent job, and I think it brings us up just slightly under where we were with O'Donnell's, but he's worth every penny, so... And he, you know, and I think it would be good to have the coverage in the office.
Do you have anything else you want to say in the area of assessing? Do you wanna, do you have anything in software, anything else you wanna talk about? Is that all tied up in, it's the, I can't remember now if the software was gonna incorporate the assessing function as well?
No, software, that's coming from Code Enforcement and Public Works Department, and it's going to be, it's still gonna work the same way that it was gonna work before. So, the presentation I gave you folks about, I don't know, less than a year ago, six months, six to eight months ago, we're still gonna have all of those functionalities, just not with Vision, with another group called WebQA, and they work for four hundred and fifty towns nationwide, so they actually have a proven product. What happened with Vision is, they sold us a product before it was ready, and we didn't realize that, so... But we recovered, and, you know, we're on top of it.
All right. So, when I'm looking at the assessors' account here, and looking at what you're asking for, I don't see this travel and training money in here.
No, but he, that's in addition as well, because he uses his own personal vehicle in order to go and do all those inspections. So, he tries to group them as close together as he can, but he found that he was spending almost two hundred dollars a week on gas, so...
And this legal account that we have under the assessors' account, we have spent zero?
That was for a court of assessment review, and I don't remember that we've ever used it. That's gonna be coming out, and all legal is coming out of our account.
Yeah. The recommendation I would have possibly on the travel issue, if you wanted to address that, although I believe O'Donnell always used his own vehicle, but if you wanted to address that, I do agree with Danielle's assessment that Kurt has done an exceptional job, but we could probably make a vehicle available to him, couldn't we, Nathan?
Oh, yeah.
From our extensive surplus fleet, of course. So, we could find something.
I'm sure there's a twenty-year-old vehicle hanging around somewhere.
Well, not twenty, maybe, but we probably have a ten-year-old, something we could have him drive, if you wanted to do that. But I agree a hundred percent. He's been a really, really great addition to our staff, and so, but that's new, too.
Why don't labels on the side, right?
Oh, yeah. You all set with the assessing? Now, under other, I don't know who's addressing other. Is that you or me, Nancy?
I'm not addressing other.
I don't know where... Did this come from you? The sheet?
Yeah, you can handle it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we're gonna put the auditors out to bid. We don't know at this point what we're gonna have for, you know, insurance increases and the health insurance, and there has been some, you know, talk by, you know, staff members, of course, and also, I've heard some elected officials say from time to time, you know, to go back out to bid, look at MMA again, because the legal issue's been covered already, so...
MMA as a possibility for health insurance?
No, for lots of things. And I didn't put that...
Right.
I didn't look at that, but it is. I'd like to see what the numbers are as to what we get legal advice for, that we don't have to pay for. What do they offer? What can they offer for insurance? What are the different benefits that MMA... Joe?
I'm listening.
And you know what? So, they have, I'd like to see what they have with it compared to what we pay out now, because you do get free legal through MMA. Trainings, trainings alone, I know one of the trainings, just for me being a selectman, is a hundred bucks, and you're not a member, it's fifty if you are a member. So, there is savings there, so I'd like to know what those are, too.
But I don't think, to answer the question now about health insurance, we've been so many years with the private sector health insurance, that there's probably no way that that would ever be a less expensive option. It's gonna cost you more money, but, you know, it's gonna be one of those issues of what you pay versus what you get, and that's a decision you all need to make or not make, I guess.
Well, they may not just be health insurance, but I just think that there's other benefits that we could possibly check into.
Right, but, so, I got on the list, I guess, because it's something that is a staff concern, and I have heard at least a couple of selectmen talk about it in the past, but... And then legal, like I said, we've covered. So, I think we've covered the issues that we might, might see.
All right, now, budget goals.
Right. Now, for years, you've had this, these goals that have been copied for you this evening, and they've been slightly modified over the years, but they've been, I wouldn't say relatively static over a long period of time, and the good news is, we've accomplished them. So, the question would be, is it the proper juncture? Should we be considering a new set of goals? Or are these goals, I mean, that's what we're here, I guess, to decide, are these still relevant? Some of these still relevant? Do we need new goals?
Well, one, we can take off the list, right? Because we've got a committed plan and...
Yep.
Right, we can take that right off.
Right off, yeah.
Two, we accomplished last year, right?
Yep.
Is it totally off? Is it zero, Nancy? Do you have two?
Two years in a row, we haven't used any on Destiny Fund bill.
Two years, well, one year, well, yeah, one year we used the, what, the assessing funds, but this past year, we used nothing. So, we can take two right off, right? Because that's been done.
Why would you take it off?
Because it's been done. We don't have to, we don't have to...
It's no longer a goal.
We don't have to limit the use, because it's gone. So, if it comes back, then it's a new thing, not the elimination of an old thing, right?
Correct.
Am I reading that wrong?
No, you're reading it right. You accomplished the goal.
I think we've heard tonight that we're probably now below three, if I was paraphrasing. In other words, we've gone below core services in some areas, and we're starting to feel the pinch. So, I don't know how you would reword three.
How do you think we've gone below core services?
Well, I'm hearing some of the things like mechanic and staff, and more time for assessing. I mean, that, if, if we're now hearing things above what we're providing, then we've gone below the needs of core services. We're not servicing the most efficient way, we're not, we're not providing things in the most efficient way, so...
No, I'm just thinking that you're meeting your core services, and now you need to grow...
To meet the core service, okay. All right. I can look at it that way.
Which can be a good sign that the town's growing, and we need to...
Right, so the core may have changed.
So, are we saying that one's okay?
No.
Well, we're saying we wanna explore options that may become a revenue-neutral option, for example, getting a mechanic.
Okay.
It could be revenue-neutral, or a slight cost.
So, we wanna explore innovative and new ways to provide the same core-level services. Is that what we're saying there?
Well, not necessarily same level, because the core may have gone up.
To provide...
To meet the expected core services.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. You got that one, Danielle? Okay. I would tell you, I still think that the next two, maybe I shouldn't speak out, but I think those are valid.
Yep.
Okay.
Still valid, and still things, in fact, as of today, I mean, I don't know where it's going, but I'm working on a joint project with two other towns on, you know, service provision for ACO services right now. We had some email exchange on the phone as we were having this meeting. So, we're always trying to find things, and I know, Bruce, you've actually made some small inroads, haven't you, in public safety?
Absolutely.
So, you're making some progress with, finally?
Yes.
And isn't Cumberland County looking at an assessing project?
I think they are, but I would say, in my mind, we would stay open-minded to that and want to see what they come up with, but I think we would be hard-pressed to come up with something that would be more cost-effective than what we're doing now, but we would wanna stay open-minded on it and see what they do. But I'm sold, as Danielle is, on the services we're getting from Kurt right now. And he, I mean, probably this is not material to this discussion, because it's a done deal, but, and I mean, nothing in life is permanent, but he did come to me recently with, he had an opportunity to move into a full-time position in the other community that he serves, and he likes working for us, wanted to continue with us, and I encouraged him to do so, and that we wanted to keep him here. And so, so I think they're gonna be hard-pressed to beat the deal we're getting. We'll see. Right now, they're doing a deal with Cumberland, Yarmouth, Falmouth, I think, and what's happening there is Cumberland, Yarmouth, and Falmouth are sharing a couple of individuals who already worked there, with one individual, I think, left for perhaps Scarborough. And so, it's fully funded through Cumberland County. Cumberland County's just the carrying agency. The costs are fully paid by those towns. So, that particular arrangement is nowhere near what we're doing in terms of cost. So, if that's what they're offering, I'm gonna say it isn't gonna work. If they can get down to where we are, maybe.
Okay, where are we?
Trash contract?
Trash. Unless it threatens only one compliance, is that agreeable?
No, I don't think so. I think we heard pretty straightforward that people are willing to pay for trash.
Right.
Yeah.
And I also think that we...
Healthy ones are gonna be threatened.
Well, well, I also think that we put out a word to all private roads to say, "Hey, meet our road standards, and we'll collect trash on them." So, you know, I think this has to change as a goal, that second sentence. Because, because we may see more roads qualify in the next few years, which will then potentially add a cost to our contract, which...
We've got one road that's came forward, and I pushed them off to the end of the contract for not wanting to change anything in the contract. They accepted that as a, but they will be back at the end of this next contract.
Sure. So, they're working on it. Other road associations are gonna hear what's happening at Panther Pond, and they're gonna figure out how they can do it. So, I think what we've, what we're hearing, especially if you've got other roads coming, and this is an important service, and I think you take that second sentence right out of there.
Yeah, I think so.
I think seven stays.
Yeah, if you're gonna be looking, if you're gonna be looking at some of these IRT projects, I think that's gonna be the solution to some of them, if you decide to do them. Take advantage of the, you know, excellent bond rating and bond for some of those improvements.
I don't understand eight anymore.
And everything's on the table, is pretty much what that says.
Okay.
Nothing is, nothing ultimately is sacrosanct. Everything's subject to review, I guess, and/or change.
Nine is obvious.
Yes.
Okay, so there we are.
Unless, of course, somebody comes up with something that they would like to add to the list, you can send it to me, you know, I could shop it around and, you know, see how people feel, and then we can put it into the preliminary goal, which I guess is gonna come on in the agenda in January, is that right? So, if there's something that you decide after the meeting you really would like to see put back on the table, I can bring it in January, with the chair's consent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we go back to the schedule? It's January thirteenth, Budget Finance Committee. They're just gonna agree to what our schedule is?
Yes.
And they're gonna come up with their own? Is that what that means?
That's what that means.
The dates that are on the schedule for them, they may want to change.
Yeah, okay.
And they may add to them.
Anything else? Motion?